Good evening, welcome to our Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five Bemidji School District Board Meeting. And glad that you can join us tonight. If you would like, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, our, actually, our third item on the list here is the approval of the agenda this evening. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Upon hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. We do not have any submissions for public participation, so we'll go to the next one. I'll ask for if there, anybody wants to remove any topics from the consent agenda. Okay, nothing there. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, we have special topics, and this evening, we have Jeff Hack coming to talk to us about Bemidji Thirty-One Foundation. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Hack. I'm the president of the Bemidji Thirty-One Education Foundation. So, thank you very much for letting me speak today. I've been able to speak with you guys, I think this is probably the third or fourth year at a, at a school board meeting. Usually, it's in August, but this year, it's in September, and I think that's a good move. So, who are we? So, we are part of the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. We're a component fund of them, just like the Lumberjack Foundation, all the scholarships that you all give out. And what's our, what's our vision? So, we are here to enhance the educational experiences for the children in our district. And we do that by giving out funds and resources to classroom educators throughout ISD Thirty-One. So, our history, we started in two thousand nineteen, right? Our scope is academics. So, we're focusing where we feel the most important place is, is in the classroom. And there's lots of other examples, so we're not unique. Every other peer district that, that you see out there, Morehead, Alexandria, Fergus Falls, they all have similar organizations like this. Each one is individual to those communities. So, many of them focus on buildings, or post-secondary scholarship, athletics, and academics. We feel that there was a gap in resources and funding and effort, so we're focusing specifically in the classroom. So, who are not? Zero tax dollars, right? No politics. So, it's been a very hard and tragic week, right, around the nation. There's lots of things that we're supposed to argue about. There's lots of budgets that people worry about, and politics, and there's a time and place to argue about those. We stay as far away from it as humanly possible, right? There's a lot of good work for us to do in the classroom. There's no politics involved with funding calculators for ninth grade, right? That's where we're focused. No extracurriculars. Again, a lot of good organizations already out there, Booster Clubs, Lumberjack Foundation, and no scholarships. We want to focus and spend our energy in one spot. And a little background as to why that is. So, you all know about school finance, but for everybody out there listening, if you were to imagine that you had one dollar, and it was going to go to education, right? So, out of that one dollar, let's say five percent of it goes to the actual act of taking it, right? So, funding the IRS, all the administration, things like that. Eighty percent of it then goes to wages and benefits, right? Which leaves about nineteen cents or so for everything else, buildings, buses, gas, you name it. And gives us about a penny, give or take, to spend on all the things that we remember from school. Field trips, art projects, all the fun stuff. We are focused just on that penny. So, our mission, Impact. So, again, seven years of impact, right? Eighty-three total funded projects for over fifty-three thousand dollars, and our method is very simple. Trust the educators, right? They spend more time with the students many times than their parents do, right? We have a very simple process for handing out money, and I'll get to that in a little bit. So, here are a few examples, right? So, a lot of the things that we do fall into a handful of different buckets. And this is from the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year. The third grade rocketry program at Lincoln has been going on for many, many years. They applied for some funds from us. We granted that. That is to supplement and keep going existing good thing. That's one way that we hand out funds. A three-D printer. So, we funded several of those, and those things, they're a lot of fun, right? Those things we, we funded on their own. So, those classroom educators said, "I need a three-D printer," they fill out a grant. We fund it a hundred percent. Here's another very good example. So, in this case, Ms. Hand at Horace May saw a need that wasn't being filled. Of course, Horace May has a great outdoor classroom, right? It's also home to one of the district-wide special ed programs. Those two things don't mix terribly well, right? So, there's a few students who couldn't get around on the outdoor classroom because their normal wheelchair was made for surfaces like these. She went out and solicited funds from many, many different places, and we were fortunate to be a small partner in that larger project. So, that's kind of where we fall. We can fund something completely. We can sustain something that's really good and just keep it going. Or we can be a small part of a larger project. So, again, last year, fourteen thousand dollars we handed out. Budgeted this year, fourteen thousand dollars again. Our goal is to be extremely simple, right? So, our impact grant process, it opened the first contract day for student, or for teachers, excuse me. It closes the Wednesday before MEA break, with our goal of having funds in teachers' hands by the first of November. Very few restrictions, right? So, like I said, we're focused in the classroom. The funds have to be spent this year, because it's hard to keep track of multi-year projects. And we don't fund things that have already been paid for. Other than that, it's kind of up to the imagination of the educator. We have funded a lot of great things. Guest speakers, field trips, three-D printers, musical instruments, shop equipment, art programs, copies of books for classrooms, you name it, all kinds of things. And every year, we get new requests of things we never would have dreamt of, right? Part of our mission is partnerships. So, our mission has two parts, partnerships and sustainability. We can't do this without partnerships. So, whether it's a building budget, whether it's another sponsor, whether it's Northwest Minnesota Foundation, the All-School Reunion Committee, we can't do this alone. And that's part of why we want to magnify our impact, is focusing on those partnerships. And sustainability is the other part, right? So, we have a very difficult job. We saw this gap, and the gap is there because the things we're trying to fund are hard to fund. It's easy to raise funds, or I shouldn't say easy, less hard to raise funds for things that make it into the news, right? Football programs, volleyball, orchestra, things of that nature. And we all remember being on those teams. It's also easier to raise money, or less hard to raise money for, let's say, PTO organizations. But we're very different from them in two different, two real ways. Those organizations have to spend the money the same year they raised it. We spend the money out of an endowment. So, we raise the money today, and then we spend it in perpetuity. So, if I don't raise any more money, I can still give out grants. A PTO organization, if they're selling candy bars, and they don't sell any candy bars this year, they don't have any money to give out. But it also is a very, it makes it more difficult for us to, to make our pitch to people. And we fall in that in-between category. So, the middle school and high school don't really have a PTO. So, if a educator needs additional resources, they don't have as many places to turn. So, that's why we're focused in those areas. It's a hard mission for us, but we feel it's very important. Every organization needs three things, time, treasure, and talent, right? Our biggest source of talent is the educators. The things that they do and the projects that they complete, that's, that's the talent we need. That's our best promotional material. That's, that's why we're here. Treasure, of course, we always need more money, and talent, or time, excuse me. So, this year is a big year for us. We want to do more. Our other peer districts give out more money than we do, right? And nobody likes losing. Morehead gives out thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We give out fourteen. Fergus Falls gives out forty thousand dollars a year. We give fourteen. We want to do more. To be able to do that, we need help, right? We need that time from people, and we want to do it in a fun way. So, our goal is to have four events a year. We had one this summer, was a car show. Went really well for our first time. That was in August. The second event is our EduPod Classic. So, we're doing a mini golf tournament at Boardwalk Mini Golf this coming Saturday. You register, it's fifty dollars. You get a round of golf and a pizza, and then all the funds come, come to us. This is our second annual one. We tried it in the spring once. We got rained out, so we're trying in the fall. The help that we need, one of the mechanisms that we're shooting for is a thing called the logging crew. So, no commitment at all. We're just looking for names of people and contact information that if we have an event, you don't mind getting an email saying, "Can you help set up the mini golf event? Can you help take down things after a car show?" Things of that nature. Both of these have a QR code. I've got a small piece of paper out here, if anybody wants to sign up for either one. And then, the last thing before we go to the finishing slide, like I said, we're shooting for four events, right? Our third one that we're going to plan for late in February is modeled after a dinner that was already done in town here. So, a Hundred Women for a Cause, we're going to do a similar thing. So, we're going to call it the Lumberjack Ten K, and that'll be at the end of February. Still working out the details, but it'll be a dinner and a show, a hundred people to try and raise money. And then, our fourth event, we, we don't know what that is yet. We're still trying to figure it out. But, like I mentioned, we want to do more, and we're really at that intersection with our organization where if we want to do more, we need to do more, and get this off the ground, and, and get these events up and rolling so we can fund all the things that, that we want to fund. Every year, we get more applications from educators. We try to fund as many as we can. Every year, there are a few that we just can't get to. So, it's a good problem to have, but we're trying to fix it. So, where can you find us? So, we have our website. We're at bemidjeeducationfoundation.org. We have a Facebook page. Yearly, we put flyers in the, in the Pioneer, the special graduation flyer, and then speaking events. Thank you very much again for letting me speak here. I got to speak at the all-staff-in-service. Try and make it out to a couple other organizations as well. And, and really, the best thing you can do at this point is come on out and golf on Saturday, because then you can kind of see the energy that we have, and help us out. It's supposed to be beautiful weather. So, that's what I have. Any questions for me?
Where's second place? We have first and third place.
We've got another third here. We've got, we've got a bunch more. So, I should say, these trophies were made by the folks at Gene Dillon, Travis Whittington, who has, has won a grant several times, so he helped us out by making the trophies for us. So, yeah, these are some of the great trophies that you win if you play the mini golf.
You can do that. Any other questions?
No question, but just thanks so much for what you're doing. And that really makes a difference in the classroom. There's a lot of things that teachers need that they end up dipping into their own pocket to get. And so, to have the opportunity to utilize what you're doing is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, every year, and this year is no exception, we get applications, and we ask, "Where are the matching funds coming from?" And this year, we've already gotten one that says, "From my own pocket." And that, that's something that tells me that that's very, very important to that educator, important enough that they're willing to spend out of their own pocket. That's something that I hope would never happen, but I know there's educators out there where if they had a million dollars, they'd still spend out of their own pocket to make it better. But yeah, that's, that's why we're there.
Yeah, I, I help serve on the board, the foundation's board, and one of the most fun meetings, and, and the meeting that you always wish you had about a million dollars, is going through those applications and seeing what people need and want, and what they're, what they describe as outcomes. And it just makes me wish I was still going to school as a kid, because that would be fun.
It's a fun meeting. Till the end, when you realize you don't have an opponent to go around. But, it's the way it goes.
Nice try.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have student representative reports, so take it away.
We actually have a lot going on this month at the high school. We have a new assistant principal, Christopher Conway, and we're also very happy to have STEM teacher, Mr. Thomas Pope, and English teacher, Mr. Jackson Lindsay, back this year. All Bemidji Public Schools had their first day on the second, and to kick off the first month of school, Bemidji High School is having their first-ever homecoming dance on September twentieth. Student Council and the JROTC program are co-hosting the event together. The dance is semi-formal and will be held in the commons of the high school. The next day, September twenty-first, Sunday, we are having the second-ever BHS Activities Parade in downtown Bemidji, where everyone is invited to come. Each sport or club will have their own float in the parade. That week, we'll also be having a women's flag football game on Monday, starting at six-thirty. On Friday, the twenty-sixth, there will be a pep fest during school, a tailgate party at three-fifteen at the high school, and then the main event, the football game, Bemidji versus Brainerd, at the BSU stadium. The following Monday, the twenty-ninth, there will be no school for all Bemidji Public Schools due to a staff development day.
Hello. First, I wanted to talk about the quality of our math books. Some of them are older than I am, which is seventeen years old. Math textbooks are the most used, and due to age, they are falling apart. We have brand-new social studies and English books, but the amount of page-turning and daily use of math books, we should prioritize the replacement of them, which, they will be replaced in February, but I am proposing no cuts to curriculum budget, because then we have textbooks that have been used for seventeen years. Another thing I want to highlight is our choir program. Last year, we had about a hundred and forty kids, and now we are well above two hundred kids. Also, our a cappella choir auditioned, and we were chosen to be one of the four groups singing at MMEA in February. Another spot of growth in the high school is the amount of kids per class. The classrooms are running out of spaces for desks, and most of my core classes have about forty kids in them, and I have heard many of the same class sizes most of the day. The music department will be selling Bemidji-area coupon books in the coming weeks for twenty-five dollars, and it goes directly to our music tour to Las Vegas. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we didn't have any listening session review people, so move on to the next. And Superintendent Olson will bring our donations this month.
Absolutely. So, this is one of my favorite items on the agenda, because it's always nice to see the community support. So, I want to thank Jack for his donation of twenty-five hundred dollars towards the sixth-grade football equipment. So, I know that that will be appreciated. So, thank you.
Okay, this is an action item. So, may I have a motion to accept these donations, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Upon hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, we have some informational items. First of all, assessment results, and Colleen will bring those to us.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair, Board Member, Superintendent, and all stakeholders. Tonight, I'm going to share a twenty-four, twenty-five district-wide assessment results. First, I would like to provide a quick reminder of our strategic plan, which includes our mission. Our mission is to empower all students to achieve their fullest potential by providing a high-quality education in a safe environment. Our results are indicators of how we are doing as a district. The results indicate our successes and our areas of improvement. We are going to begin with our enrollment data. Our October first of two thousand twenty-four data show that our enrollment to be at four thousand seven hundred and twenty-two, which is down from the four thousand eight hundred and twelve of the prior school year. Know that this does fluctuate throughout the year, but that is the October first enrollment information. Our district's enrollment is comprised of sixty-seven point nine percent white and twenty-five point nine percent American Indians. All other identified subgroups together make up about six point one percent of our population. Special ed enrollment is at twenty-three point one. Y our free and reduced is at forty-two point five percent. Our homeless population, which is growing, was at two point five last school year. The year prior to that, the population was at one point six. You can see that that population is currently growing. Next is our math results, our MCA math results. The criteria that we're using is, is in the following chart, is identified above. Notice that we only use those meeting the North Star Inclusion Indicator, which is the indicator that only counts the students that, who were enrolled fifty percent of the day to be counted in these results prior to the testing time. In the area of mathematic proficiency, Bemidji was slightly above the state at forty-six percent, while the state was at forty-five point seven. Our sped population is at nineteen point six, while the state is at twenty-one point four. Our free and reduced population is above the state at thirty percent, while the state was at twenty-six point four. Our homeless population is at nine point one percent, while the state is at eleven point one. Our American Indian population is slightly above at two, or twenty-five point eight, compared to the state at twenty-four point three. Our Hispanic population is also higher than the state at thirty-four point eight, compared to the twenty-three, or twenty-three point two percent. Our African-American population is at seventeen point six, while the state is at twenty-two point three. Our white population is at fifty-three point five, while the state is at fifty-five point six. Our two or more races is at thirty-eight point six, while the state is at forty-three point seven. Our female group is at forty-two point one, while the state is at forty-two point six. And males are slightly above at forty-nine point five, while the state is at forty-eight point six. Congrats goes out to Horace May, Lincoln, and Northern, who were more than nine percent, almost ten, above the state in the math proficiency. For several of those schools, this is the second year in a row. To be ten percent above the state speaks volumes. So, what we've been doing to put things in place, and our staff's hard work and dedication is really starting to, to show through our results. And that's pretty exciting to see. So, thanks to our staff. Next is our MCA reading results. Again, we only use those meeting the North Star Inclusion Criteria results, meaning they're here fifty percent of the time. In the reading proficiency area, the state was slightly above Bemidji with the state at fifty point two, and Bemidji at forty-seven point seven. Special education population was eighteen point two, and the state at twenty-two point one. Our free and reduced population was slightly above the state at thirty-three point five, while the state was at thirty-two point eight. Our homeless population was fifteen point one, while the state was at sixteen point five. Our American Indian population is at thirty-two, while the state was at thirty-two point seven. Our African-American population, thirty-seven point five, above the state at thirty-one point three. Our Hispanic population scoring above the state at fifty-one percent, while the state was at twenty-nine point nine. Our white population scoring at fifty-three point four, while the state scored at fifty-eight point eight. And our two or more races at thirty-two point six, while the state was at fifty point six. Our female population at fifty-one point three, while the state was at fifty-three point three. And our male population at forty-four point four, while the state was at forty-seven point two. Congratulations to Lincoln and Northern, who are more than ten percent above the state in reading proficiency. Again, thanks to all the hard work. I talked last time about FastBridge, and briefly, I would like to share with you our FastBridge growth results in reading and math. These results show the growth of our students, comparing them from the fall scores to the spring. The growth is shown from fall to spring of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These first charts demonstrate students' benchmark score, this chart on the left. Our district decreased in the number of students that scored in the high-risk skill range, and we grew the number of students that are in the solid skill area. The second chart shows that all schools grew students by identifying the median number of students who grew. So, we can honestly say that in each, each area, in the mathematics area, we grew kids. In the area of reading on FastBridge, you also see the same charts demonstrating, again, the decrease in the number of students that scored at the high-risk skill range, and the increase of the number of students that are in the solid skill area. Again, our students grew in our district. Our MCA science results are still on hold. We do not have those results yet, and it sounds like they have been pushed back one more time. So, sorry that I can't share that with you, but someday soon. Next is our quick review of our graduation results, which we've already shared. Since we're looking at data, we just want to remind you that our, our public school district results, including Bemidji High School, Lumberjack High, First City, and AEC graduation is at seventy-four point eight, compared to the state at eighty-four point two, but if you isolate Bemidji High School, it is at eighty point six. And our, our graduation trend is just slightly down. We did have a very transient school year last year, and so, we're hoping that our kids stay with us and our graduation rate increases. Each school year will, again this year, each school will, again this year, analyze their own school data and use this chart to create their action plans. They are still waiting on data. As, as you know, our science data has not been given. And due to the late math and reading results, we still have work on this. From our district analysis, we have determined that we will continue to focus on Tier One with an emphasis on, on building and implementing assessments that align with the priority standards. Our focus on instruction and standard mastery will continue to ensure all students are receiving a very rigorous, comprehensive curriculum throughout all grades. So, we will continue on that focus, because we have seen some gains. Speaking of the schools that are above the nine and ten percent, again, that is a very difficult thing to do. Oftentimes, you see two to three percent gains, so we know we're on the right track, but we just need more time. A little, we got a little sidetracked, because we had to do carry-all, but we are coming back to the Marzano work and our Tier One work, and so, we're hoping to see, continue to see those gains. It's a very positive to see growth in all area, according to our FastBridge results. Questions or comments? Or concerns?
Okay, thank you very much, Colleen. Appreciate that, and good to know we're headed in the right direction. Okay, so, next on our agenda, we have our action items for this evening. And our first action item is a proposed levy certification, and Ashley Eastbridge will bring that to us, please.
Thank you, Chair, while members of the board. Tonight, I am presenting the initial two thousand twenty-five payable two thousand twenty-six levy limitation certification. I just want to explain a little background on the levy limitation certification process. MDE gathers information from many sources to create the two thousand twenty-five payable two thousand twenty-six levy limitation and certification report. It's a thirty-nine-page report that gives a detailed presentation of many complicated school funding formulas. The driving factor for most of those formulas is student enrollment. School boards are required to set the levy limitation in September, and the final levy certification takes place in December, following the truth and taxation hearing. The final levy cannot exceed the initial levy limit, except for a very limited set of reasons, such as a new referendum vote passing, a natural disaster, and so, so forth. The Department of Education has set up a system where school boards can set the levy limit at maximum allowed under the state formulas, and if small changes occur between September and December meetings, the school board can adopt a final levy without additional meetings. So, I want to stop and make sure that we're all comfortable with the term maximum. So, maximum means that we're adopting a levy that is for the maximum amount allowed by the funding formulas set by the legislature, and that those formulas are based on estimates the district submits to MDE, which is mainly enrollment. Certifying at maximum in September also allows MDE to complete their process and make any necessary changes or corrections before the school board certifies their final levy in December, which is extremely important this year, and I'll get to that. If we were to certify a specific dollar amount tonight, we would be at risk- we would be at risk for not being able to levy for the total amount that the state statute funding formula would allow. It is important to remember that a school board has no taxing authority of its own. Taxing authority must be granted by the state legislature through statutes or approved by a vote to the local taxpayers through a referendum election for school-building bonds or operating revenue. I also want to emphasize that school districts are different than cities and counties that, when it comes to the levy, school districts levy amounts are governed by funding formulas set in state statute that is approved by the legislature. And additional amounts above and beyond those funding formulas would have to be approved by voters. Cities and counties are able to determine the amount of revenue they need to generate from the levy to balance their budget. They don't have a maximum amount that limits the amount that they can levy. So our tax base, which is also called the adjusted net tax capacity, has increased 6.9% this past year compared to 13.2% the, the prior year and 43.8% over a four-year time period. This growth can be a result of new construction or existing properties selling for more or a combination of both. The sales ratio is the relationship between the market value of a property and its actual sales price. In Bemidji, the sales ratio is 91.2%, and that means properties are selling for more than their assessed market value. Since the Bemidji sales ratio is below 100%, it has the effect of automatically increasing property valuations for tax purposes. A fluctuating tax base will affect the equalization formulas and result in adjustments to tax or tax levy. I want to take a minute to explain equalization because that's a key component of the levy. A district is awarded a certain amount of revenue based on those state formulas that we've talked about. And then that total revenue is received through local property taxes and state aids. As property tax values rise, the portion of the total revenue received from the property taxes increases and the state aid portion decreases. The reverse is also true. When property tax values decrease, the amount of total revenue from property taxes decrease and the amount of state aid increases. So like, total revenue doesn't change, it's just what source it's coming from, whether it's local taxpayers or state aid. And that's based on the equalization for the, based on those valuations. So equalization is a big factor in our levy system. The, the, some levy categories are heavily equalized and others are not equalized at all. If a school district decides to under levy in a, in a certain category, they may, that might result in a loss of corresponding state aid in addition to the levy. So if we under levy in a, in a category, we, we would also lose out on the state aid that corresponds with it potentially, which is not desirable. Most funding formulas are based on estimated student counts. Much later, much later in time, when these accounts, these student counts become actual data, adjustment is made to our levy. So levy categories that have an adjustment in their title represents an adjustment in a levy from a prior year. So I put in estimates for future years in, in the summer. They take that information and they use that to create the levy, but then they go back in time, so previous, previous student numbers become actuals, and then they adjust the levy for those differences in the projections and what the actuals are. In setting the initial levy limit, the, the state allows the school board to certify the maximum levy authority available rather than a specific dollar amount. This is because there's so many formulas that can have changes prior to the final certification in December. And then by certifying the maximum, a school board can eliminate the need for additional board meetings to incorporate those changes. And so this year is different. Historically, the school board is presented with preliminary levy figures at the September board meeting. And unfortunately, the levy limitation certification report that was dated September 10th, which was the most recent one I had last Thursday when this was due to you guys for the board book, they had significant adjustments that still needed to be made. I actually had a webinar with MDE today, this afternoon, and there's many, many school districts that are in the same boat as us. So I don't want to present levy information to you that's going to significantly change. So until I have more accurate information, which will be by the end of this month, I can communicate that out to the school board. So with all that being said, I would just recommend that the school board certifies the initial 2025 payable 2026 levy certification at maximum.
Any questions for Ashley? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to motion on this. Can someone bring forth a motion to approve the 2025 pay 2026 levy limit to the maximum, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Ashley. Okay, next, we have staffing positions, and that will be brought to us by Jordan Hickman. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. If you refer to your packet, you will see an action item regarding reemployment of several individuals. In April, at the school board meeting, action was taken to release John Kovac, Kristi Winchell, and Case Yerbage effective June 5th, 2025. Due to vacancies that existed after that date and the ability of these individuals to obtain appropriate licensures or permissions to continue employment, I am recommending their rehire this evening. So this would be a resolution to rehire John Kovac, Kristi Winchell, and Case Yerbage.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody like to bring forth the motion to rehire these three individuals, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, and this is a resolution, so it's a roll call vote.
Frenzel?
Yes.
Haugen?
Yes.
Haggas?
Yes.
Longbokner?
Yes.
Maniki?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have approval to submit to an MSBA resolution ensuring adequate time for impact of new laws. And Jack, did you want to go ahead and talk about that, please?
Yeah, just a little background on this and then a synopsis of it. So the background is, MSBA lobbies the legislature on behalf of Minnesota school boards. And they have a deadline towards the end of September for resolutions to be submitted by either school boards or individual school board members. And I was reached out to by a fellow school board member from Farmington, Minnesota, who is spearheading an effort to get districts behind this motion, which would urge MSBA to lobby the legislature. And what they're urging for, well, does a couple of things. First is that it recognizes the fact that the legislative session and school board's timeline for planning their budgets happen at around the same time. And this creates major problems because we're creating our budgets without all the knowledge of what the legislature is going to do. And so we'll finalize our budget, and then here at the end of the legislative session, they'll drop unexpected costs on us. For example, just recently, they reduced special education transportation funding by 5% starting immediately in '25-'26 fiscal year. Cut library aid by 34% per pupil and cut the minimum amount of aid per school district in half from $40,000 to $20,000 and reduced expected professional development funding for social workers, nurses, and counselors. If we're going to have to adjust our budget after the fact, what this is asking is that any, any laws passed by the legislature should give us more time. It specifically says a year, so the next fiscal year. So you'd have one year from the time any laws that cost a large amount of money to the district to at least plan for them and adjust our, our budgets accordingly. I know several other districts are voting on supporting this as well. It sounded like MSBA was supportive, so I'd like to offer this resolution for consideration.
Okay, thank you. And we did take out one item on this that was specific to that school district. You got, got them?
So it's current on?
It is current on there. Yep, okay. All right, very good. All right, would somebody like to bring forth a motion to accept this MSBA resolution ensuring adequate time for impacting of new laws, please?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Will you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. And any discussion? All right. Upon hearing no discussion, we, this is a resolution, so we'll have a roll call vote.
It's not a resolution. It's a resolution for MSBA.
Okay.
Yeah, and I should have probably explained that it, it's confusing because it says resolution. So it's the board actually giving permission to, for, for submission to MSBA. So the actual action is the board giving permission. The resolution then goes to MSBA, so it's not creating our own resolution. So that's why procedurally, we can go ahead and just have a, a standard motion and second.
All right, well, I have those. So if all those in favor want to say aye, please aye, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so that carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, that concludes our action items for tonight. Next, we have events coming up around the district, and Superintendent Osland will bring those to us.
Thank you. So we have several items happening throughout the district. Okay, I'm going to change up this up a little bit. All right. So Friday, September 19th, we have a school dance at Bemidji Middle School. Saturday, September 20th, EduPutt for, for the 31 Foundation, which we just heard about. September 20th through 26th is Homecoming Week at Bemidji High School. September 29th, no school district-wide for staff development. Thursday, October 2nd, conferences at Bemidji High School. October 7th, 9th, and 14th are also conferences at Bemidji Middle School. October 9th is the Family Reading Night at Northern Elementary. October 15th, early out district-wide. And October 16th and 17th, no school district-wide.
Okay. Thank you for those. You have some more, right? B and C here? Or did you cover that?
Yes.
All right. We have a couple of other items as well. So the next school board meeting is October 20th, 2025, at 6:30 in the district office boardroom. And then truth and taxation meeting, and that's just prior to the regular December board meeting, December 15th at 6:00 PM in the district office.
Okay, thank you. Under other items, we have the superintendent's report and school board recognition month.
Yes, so on the superintendent report, I just wanted to report a couple of different things. First of all, I wanted to start off by thanking our teachers, our staff, and our students for making this a positive start to the year. I think that we've had tremendous, we have tremendous people in our district. And while we certainly have improvement areas, as we, as we saw in some of our assessments, I am very proud of this district and the work that we do on a daily basis. I, I do want to thank our staff. As part of our strategic plan, we want to emphasize relationships and communication with our students, school, and community. We want to continue to tell our story, and we want to continue to draw attention to the important, important work that our educators are doing to improve student outcomes and create opportunities for our students. So if there's ever any items that educators want to highlight, we, we certainly welcome the invite into your classroom to highlight some of the great things that are happening. We want to continue to focus on instructional improvement, measures that make sense, and avoiding fads in education. We have trained our elementary teachers and selected staff on the reading instruct, on reading instruction, and now we're moving into training our selected secondary staff. So when we talk about our early outs, last year it was focused on elementary. Now we're focusing on secondary as part of the Read Act. I also wanted to talk about school safety. You know, obviously, given recent events in our country, I wanted to report on school safety because school safety is not something you prepare for in one, you know, a couple of days or whatever. This is something that's ongoing as, as a district. And I want to share some information, you know, all the information I'm sharing, obviously, is the information that's public because we can't share all detailed plans because we want to keep that in place. But our district relies on several different layers to protect our students and staff, and that is building safety. So a few years ago, we implemented a district-wide process to make sure that every door was locked in our district. That's very important. We've focused on community partnerships with our, our emergency personnel. We have SROs, and we are working very closely with our emergency responders to plan and develop strategies on how to work together and hopefully keep our, our students very safe and, and improve our safety throughout our district. We also have worked on threat assessment and communication. So there's a process that we call threat assessment that we work through different situations, making sure that we are responding appropriately on all things that are brought to us. And our goal is to separate out those items that are for school discipline as opposed to those items that need further intervention. So we, we do work through a process with local law enforcement, with our principals and so forth, to make sure that those processes are in place. And then, of course, we, we want to make sure that we create an environment in which students trust us and can come to us because that is really important to creating that, those relationships and making sure that we are understanding what's happening in our schools. Last of all, or actually, before I get into a thank you, I do want to point out too, one of the items that came up tonight was our math curriculum books and so forth. And I think this really emphasizes why it's important to maintain our curriculum structure because when you delay purchases, you're, it may save you dollars in one year, but it just gets more and more expensive as we move forward. So that's why I've been very, it's very important as a district that we continue our curriculum cycle, that we work towards that, that we stay on cycle because otherwise, what we do is we just delay curriculum down the road. I also want to give a shout out and thank you to Dan Kirfman for his endless work. So he keeps our bus fleet operational. Dan can be found crawling under a bus to get down the road in the early hours of the morning at negative 10 degrees. He drops whatever he's doing to answer questions and give advice to drivers. He just works lots of hours to get stuff down, to get the buses ready for inspection. And he's just, he has a lot of challenges, but he just does such a marvelous job in keeping our bus fleet operational. And I just wanted to, on behalf of the school board and administration, publicly thank him.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to our adjournment. May I have a motion for adjournment, please? I am sorry. My goodness.
I did also want to let the board know that we are in September, school board recognition month. And so in a little bit, we're after adjournment. I'd like to gather everyone, and we have some certificates of recognition for your, your good work that you do each and every day. I'd like to get us all together and take a group picture, if we could, after adjournment. So again, thank you for serving on the school board on behalf of our kids.
Okay, now, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody.